Welcome everyone to today's Town of Chatham's zoning board of appeals meeting. The date is June 22, 2023. Pursuant to Governor Healey's March 29, 2023 signing of the Acts of 2023 extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions on the open meeting law until March 31, 2025, this meeting of the Chatham ZBA is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Then you punch in the ID number for the conference, which is 25272252267, then hit the pound, or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link on the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue, hearing, or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this form of hybrid meeting, we need to have a roll call of all members stating their name and whether they agree or not. Start with Buck, please.
James M. Upson, I agree.
Lee Hovey, I agree.
All C. Simple, I agree.
David S. Nixon, I agree.
Randy Pottash, I agree.
Virginia Fenwick, I agree.
David H. Veach, I agree.
Okay, to begin the meeting, we have a couple of things I want to take care of. Number one, our executive producer, that would be Mark Van Bork, is a professional musician, and that's what he does, but to make money, he comes here and works for the town, is our executive. So I want to read you a little something. There was a recently, a musical at the Howard Junior Theater, although it's now called, I think, the Cape Cod Theater Company. At any rate, this is what they wrote about Mark, the reviewer. Worth the price of admission is Mark Van Bork's guitar solo on this, one of my favorite songs by the Eagles, and I believe that was Hotel California. So Mark, congratulations. Good for you. On the good news department, because we like to have meetings, we're adding one in August. So that's going to be on August 17th. So yeah, we got that much business coming already, so please add that to your list of meetings. Paul, do we have any minutes we'd like to talk about?
Yes, I will move to adopt the minutes of May 25, 2023, as published with some minor corrections.
And Dave Veach, seconds.
Okay, need a vote on that, Buck?
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Approve.
Dave Veach approves.
And I approve. Okay, I was going to give a quick one-two to the folks here and tell you how our meeting is conducted. To begin with, the hearing notice is read by the lady to my right. This is Sarah V. Clark, she's the PPO for the Town of Chatham, that is the principal permitting officer. Following that, we would have a presentation either by, either by the applicant or their representative. When they're done, we would ask that anybody either here on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor, only in favor, to do so by indicating you wanted to join the meeting. When that's done, I would read any and all letters that we have, whether it be pro or con. Following that, we would ask for anybody who had a statement or a question that was either a negative, or they wish to have some question answered regarding the application, that would be their opportunity to join the meeting and ask a question, or speak about what is going on. Following that, we would have questions from the members of the board. When we're done with that, we would close the public hearing and go into deliberation. That is not open to the public, just ourselves, unless we inject you into the conversation. Then we would take a vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To be successful, you need to get a super majority. In our case, there are five voters, and today it's Buck, Paul, myself, Randy, and Dave, that of that five, you have to have four yes. So three doesn't do it, even though that's a majority, has to be a super majority. And I think that's about it. Unless you've got something else you want to spring on us, Sarah, what do you think? No? Okay, so we'll have a continuance to begin with. Sarah, please read, that is 23-052.
Application number 23-052, Ryder's Cove Dreams LLC, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 676 Orleans Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 12J Block 12, Lot 5. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling, swimming pool, two garages, and the removal of an exterior mechanical system appliance, AC condenser, and the construction of a new dwelling, swimming pool, garage with habitable space above, and the installation of an exterior mechanical system appliance, pool equipment. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 21.2 feet from the Eastern Lea Butter and 25 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District. The existing mechanical unit is non-conforming, and it is located 19.7 feet from the Eastern Lea Butter. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and it will be located 20.7 feet from the Eastern Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and 25 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed exterior mechanical unit will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 21.9 feet from the Eastern Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,580 square feet, 9.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,686 square feet, 9.9%, where 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 39,600 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Sarah received the following letter on June 9th from William F. Riley. He writes, "I hereby request a continuance to be moved to July 27th. Thank you very much for your assistance in this matter." No reason was given. Any discussion?
Attorney Riley is not in town, that's why he needed the continuance.
Well, we could have had it without him. No problem.
I'll move to grant the requested continuance to July 27, 23.
Dave Veach, seconds.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Veach approves.
Sarah, 23-040, please.
Application number 23-040, Michael and Elizabeth Riley, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 448 Old Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 16G Block 11, Lot K3. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition, covered entry, and pergola. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located .1 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13, 14.1 feet from the North Lea Butter, 7.4 feet from the Southern Lea Butter. The proposed addition and pergola will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 8.4 feet from the Southern Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed cover, covered entry will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 0 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,061 square feet, 15.8%, and the proposed building coverage is 1,073 square feet, 16%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 6,700 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 15,000 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Protective Bylaw. This was continued from June 8, 2023 for re-advertising.
Mr. Litchfield.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bill Litchfield here on behalf of the applicants, Michael and Elizabeth Riley. With us virtually is Karen Kempton, who was the designer of the plans. I want to take a moment and do two things. First, I join you in taking note of Mark's skills. I'd seen a write-up about him in The Globe a couple of weeks ago, and I'm also struck that he and I have something else in common, because, because you pay nothing for them, my presentations are also worth the price of admission, so we have that in common as well. The, just to explain the re-advertising, the floodplain areas or measurements changed, and we wanted to correct that, and that was done. It was minor, no change in the plans, just the, the plans were proposing, just in the floodplain map. Perhaps you would be kind enough, Sarah, to bring up either the site plan or the elevations? That's the site plan there, and what is shown on the lower left below the 448, where the hand or cursor now is a proposal to enclose the existing porch. If you looked in the window, you saw a very small kitchen, and the Rileys have owned this house now for a dozen years or so, a little bit longer than that, I guess, and they would like to have a somewhat marginally more utilitarian kitchen by expanding it. That doesn't increase coverage, because it already has a porch of it, but it's about 120 square feet that we would be extending. And then above the number eight, there, right there, thank you, Sarah, is a very small roofed-over porch. Basically, it'll keep the rain off your head when you come out the door. That's really just all that is involved. So I don't know whether you would like me to ask Karen to talk about the elevations, which are fairly simple. Instead, I'll go into the criteria as to adequacy of site, including building coverage and setbacks. Despite the multiple non-conformities as shown there, there are the elevations, the house of the site rather is adequate for a house built around 1945. I think you can approve the special permit based on the finding that the site is adequate for that 120-square-foot addition, simply enclosing the porch and allowing for a slightly larger kitchen with no change in setbacks or coverage, but there is a 12-square-foot increase in coverage, which is obviously very minor. As to compatibility of size, the neighborhood, and the third page of the handout, I gave you the comparable properties. The neighborhood was developed both before and under prior zoning, the sizes vary considerably, but we are compatible with most nearby properties. The existing footprint is 1,061 square feet. It will increase to 1,073 square feet, and it will thus be less, still smaller than any of the other houses in the neighborhood. Coverage will change from 7.1% to 7.2%, obviously a small change, and still very small. It will remain compatible if you approve a special permit even with a minor addition. The gross floor area and living area are still less than all but one adjacent home. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, is 12 square feet, obviously very small solely from the covered side entry. As to suitability of site, the site has been suitable for residential use for the 80 years since it was built. The Conservation Commission has reviewed this proposal, notwithstanding the correspondence that the, the chair will read later, it was approved on June 7th, subject only to your review, and they anticipate, I'm told by David Clark, writing the Order of Conditions on June 29th. As to scale, citing mass, views, and vistas, this is obviously a very private location, and the words "mass" and "streetscape" really aren't terribly applicable, but it's a simple and attractive design which Karen has provided, without impact on views and vistas, and you can approve it based on the finding that, that a design for the small addition is appropriate. It's not readily seen, and even though it isn't readily seen, the chair will read letters from, I think, every butter in the area, those who can, who live near it or can see it from Shore Road. They are supporter, there's no change in scale, views or vistas, as to compatibility of use, that will not change, it's a residential use. Board of Health has no concerns with the expansion of the kitchen, obviously that's not a bedroom, no impact on traffic flow, and safety, noise, litter, and of course, all utilities are presently there. So the question, as you know, the issue to consider is whether enclosing the porch to allow for a somewhat more functional kitchen on the existing footprint and that, without any change in setbacks, but with a 12-square-foot increase in coverage for the small roof overhang, whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's been reviewed and approved by the Historic Commission, because the house is over 75 years old. They had no concerns, did not impose a demolition delay. Again, it's been reviewed by the Conservation Commission and by the neighbors. As the owners seek a very modest expansion of living area respectfully of the neighborhood and with the bylaw, which this proposal achieves, so given the criteria and the plans and the location, I think that you can find that enclosing the porch with a minimal change in coverage, but without further encroachment into the setbacks, is not substantially more detrimental. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the discussion.
There is no one to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a note from Julia Giorgio, health agent for the Town of Chatham. She writes on 613, "I've reviewed the plan to renovate. The plan as proposed does not add septic flow, nor does it encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns." Then we have a note, this is from Crystal Keon, she's the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant, and she writes on June 5th, "The Conservation Commission is holding a public hearing on June 28th. If the ZBA approves the project, it will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Local Wetland Bylaw, Chapter 272, and regulations promulgated thereunder." Then we have a note from Christina Bassett. She writes, she is the Historical Commission here in town, the staff liaison. She writes on June 2nd, "Please find the application package," well, no, let's see, "The Chatham Historical Commission heard this on May 16th, and they found the home not historically significant, and therefore a demolition delay was not imposed." Then we have an email, this is from George Chane, C-H-A-N-E, 594, Shore Road. He writes on May 31st, "I'm in a butter, and I'm writing in support. The Rileys have done nothing but improve their property while preserving the historic nature of a charming structure and adhering to the numerous town regulations and bylaw affecting all waterfront properties. The current proposal will not interfere with any neighbor's sightlines, it will increase the footprint of the structure only minimally. It has already been okayed by the Conservation Commission. I urge the board to grant the special permit request." Then we have a email, this is from Bob Lapides, L-A-P-I-D-E-S. He writes on the May 30th, "In 2022, we purchased a home at 444 Old Harbor. Michael and Elizabeth Riley have shared the schematic of the potential work for the project they're hoping to get approval for. My wife and I support the project." And we have an email, this is from William Madar, M-A-D-A-R. He writes on May 25th, "We're the owners of 31 Thayer Lane. We support the request for a special permit to implement their plans or construction on their property." That was from William and Amanda. Then we have a note from Hal and Kathy Gershman. They write on May 24th, "The Gershmans at 51 Thayer Lane have no objection to the requests." Thank you. And then finally, we have a note from Ed Hofseppian, I believe, at 446 Old Harbor. "As a director butter, please accept this email as my endorsement towards granting their special permit. I see no negative impact." And that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to ask a question or speak against? If so, this is your time. Please indicate you'd like to join the conversation.
There is no one with a question or to speak in opposition.
Okay, so we'll have questions from the board. Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Lee?
No questions.
All?
No questions.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a quick question about conservation. Did they have any mitigation for this type of project? I'm, I'm interested in conservation right now in terms of how they interact with our findings, and so that's why I'm wondering.
To be, to be perfectly honest, given the limited impact, David Clark handled the conservation hearing, I did not, but I would suspect that because the roof overhang isn't on the ground and the expansion of the kitchen is on an existing hardscape, I doubt there were any major requirements for mitigation. There may have been some minimal ones, but I, I wouldn't think there'd be much.
I didn't know if it was standard, every time you wanted to do something, you have to give them something.
If, if I could not belabor it, but conservation has a, they don't have a strict requirement, but they do have a policy in terms of one-for-one or two-for-one, depending on whether it's in the adjacent upland resource area or the resource area. They have sort of a formula, but I don't think it had application here.
Thank you.
Jenny?
I had no questions.
Dave?
And I have no question. I'll, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veach, seconds.
And Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Veach approves.
I approve. Deliberations. Lee?
Well, I have no issues with this project. I think it's a very modest addition. I think it's going to be an improvement to the house, not in any way detrimental to the neighborhood, and if I were voting, I would be all for it.
Paul?
I agree with Lee's assessment. It seems to me it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
From my part, having lived in that house for nine months, let me tell you, that kitchen is small, and so I'm happy to see this happening.
Counsel, I agree with your assessment of the criteria, and it's not a substantial project, therefore it's not substantially detrimental.
I agree, I think there's minimal change in the coverage. I, I wanted to also say that I applaud the, the owners and the applicant here for not demolishing the property when they purchased it in, I think it was 2009, and they've made apparently incremental and quite wonderful improvements since that time. It was very charming.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, I agree with all previous, Dave.
Buck?
Nothing new to add.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I don't think we need conditions, given the cooperation of neighbors among themselves and so forth, the minor nature of the project.
Yeah, Dave Veach, seconds.
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Veach approves.
I approve, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Sarah, 23-051, please.
Application number 23-051, David Howe and Lisa Howe, care of Theodore Strieber, 15 Linden Tree Lane, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at Two Schollop Terrace, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map, 16A Block 28A Lot H141. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing roof, elevation of the existing first floor, and construction of a new second floor and additions to the dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 18.1 feet from Schollop Terrace, 18 feet from Seagull Road, 3.8 feet from the Northeast Lea Butter, 10.6 feet from the North Lea Butter, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 13. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 14.1 feet from Schollop Terrace, 6.2 feet from Seagull Road where a 40-foot setback is required, 4.3 feet from the Northeast Lea Butter, and 10.6 feet from the North Lea Butter where a 25-foot setback is required, and entirely within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the installation of an unpaved path and expansion of the existing driveway as allowed by special permit. The existing building coverage is 835 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 867 square feet, where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 0 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 3,387 square feet of land area where 40,000 square feet is required in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D2B of the Protective Bylaw.
Sam? Ted? Welcome.
I'm Sam Strieber, representing the House and coming before you, Lisa's in the audience and is available should the need arise. One project, our project is to raise the existing house at Two Schollop and three foot, 3.6 feet above the existing foundations. Portions of the existing 12 and 12 roof will be demolished to allow dormers on the, on the second floor, which will allow the loft space that's there to have a more useful headroom for sitting, TV watching, and enjoying the view of Pleasant Bay and Stage Harbor. A 3.6-foot rise is needed to set the first floor at the FEMA BFE 13-feet elevation plus an additional 1 foot of freeboard for the total first floor elevation of 14 feet. Once the first floor is at the raised level, two means-of-hegress stairs will be required on the, to, from the first floor down to grade, and a deck is also needed for the living level to have a quick access, easy access to outdoor spaces and sitting spaces. It is these low wood constructions which are added to the raised building so that one can live at a, at a raised height. These stairs, walkways, and decks are now what is used in measuring to the lot line for the proposed setbacks. Thus, the road setback to Seagull Road was from the existing- was from the existing building corner and is now measured from the proposed deck, went from 18 feet to 6.2 feet. And the road setback to Schollop Terrace was from the building corner, is now measured from the proposed entrance, entry stair, and went from 18.1 feet to 14.1 feet. The abutter setback on the northeast sideline went from, was measured from a roof that was a bike storage, small little bike storage along the side. And it's now proposed from the, a back stair, and the distance increased from 3.8 feet to 4.3 feet. The rear setback on the west remains the same at 10.6. The height of the ridge increased by 3.6 feet, and the coverage increased from, because of the 4-foot addition on the northeast corner, went from 835 feet, square feet, to 867 square feet. The proposed dormers bring to the raised house into closer consistency in form with some of the newer raised houses while not overscaling them. Thad will describe the interesting mitigation that he worked out with Conservation Commission. It will be included with the special permit.
Hello, Thad Aldrich, G Southeast. Across the street from the subject property, the House owned, what's on Sheet 4? Thank you. There's a path, there's a wetland. It used to be a field, developing into a nice, robust wetland. But the path is sitting over an old road, and we can't figure out where that is in the record. It doesn't show up in any of the land court plans, but there is asphalt that's out there, and that's hindering the ability of some shrubby vegetation from growing. So we have about 2,000 square feet of asphalt to be removed. And then we would come back and put down some lomi sand and seed it with native grass species. You can see that there's a little divot cut out of it, about a third the way up. That's where the asphalt is likely broken. There's some woody vegetation growing through there, so we're avoiding that part, taking up the larger pieces of asphalt. And that will enable nature to continue its course. Thank you.
So if I can, can we go to the plans so that the first floor? So if you could start on the existing? So here is the footprint of the house. This is the back stair. This is the only living level. There is a circular stairway that takes you up to a second floor. If you could show the second floor, which is just a... Here's the circular stair, takes you to this living level here. And this is a little storage place, a utility. And that's the house in plan. The basement is crawl space, roughly 2.8 feet high. It's not accessible. There's some storage space. So if we could look at the section, so on the next. So there's the storage area. There's the living level, and this is the loft. Basically, the loft is, half of it is a two-story space for the living level. So we're keeping the footprint of the foundations, and we're going to be adding 3.6 feet of framing to raise the building up. If you could go to the section on the first elevation. That should be there, there. So we've added a frame area around, and then this is the existing first floor, first floor walls. And some of the second floor will stay, and it will be added to cover the main part. This will then become a partial roof deck. If we could go to the second floor. So here is the second floor. Here's the stairway up. Here's the sitting space, and then a little roof deck. And then the elevation is back. Yeah. So this is the main street elevation. This is the deck that's added to the original structure to give outside space. This is the stairway, the entry stair. And this is the second floor, which has been raised to, raised the same 3.6 feet, because we're using the existing gable structure here. And then that's for family living. So this is the elevation that faces onto, onto Seagull Road. And we're taking away the steep look of the house. So if I can go to the criteria. Adequacy of the size of the site. The House have lived in this house 12 years, and have enjoyed living in the quaint neighborhood of small cottages so close to Pleasant Bay beaches and the outermost Marina. Their house is similar in size to many others in the area because it is one of the cottages originally built by the Horns for seasonal rental. It's a one-story with a tight little loft on the second floor on a lot just able to support the house, consisting of a combined living, dining, kitchen with two tiny bedrooms, a single bath, all in just over 1,000 square feet. The existing house was demolished, the original Horns' house was demolished in 2007 with a new, and raised 10 feet with a new substantial foundation and a new IA nitrogen-reducing septic system was placed in the front yard of both Seagull Road and Schollop Terrace. This lot is not the smallest-sized lot on Schollop Terrace at 3,387 square feet, with buildable upland at zero square feet, since almost five feet of the lot elevation is well below the 13 feet of required base flood elevation 13. The lot, however, will have a shale parking space, two in tandem, and a lawn on the west side of the house on three, proposed deck on Seagull Road, and a narrow side yard protected by large cedar trees. Compatibility of the size with the neighboring properties. The six properties of Schollop Terrace are all very similar as cottages grouped around a single roadway. Number two was the first to be raised in 2007, retaining its original cottage footprint. The lot size at 3,387 square feet is very consistent in size with the neighbor across the street at Three Schollop Terrace at 5,711 square feet. All the other lots are close in size, with number 16, 25, 2,576 square feet, the very smallest. None on the street and few in the other streets in the neighborhood meet the R40, 40,000-square-foot minimum requirement. Extent of the increase in non-conforming nature. The design intent of this project is to raise the new structure for almost the same footprint up to meet the FEMA elevation with the 1-foot of freeboard to 14-foot elevation. The House has an existing coverage of 835 square feet or 24.7% of the lot. The proposed house includes a small 4-foot-wide addition to provide a second bathroom for the owner's bedroom. Otherwise, the footprint of the new house is exactly the same. Then the new coverage is 867 square feet or 25.6% of the lot. The height of the existing is 25.9 feet, and the proposed is 29.5 feet under the 30-foot required. The proposed height is caused by raising the first floor to the required FEMA BFA 13-foot elevation with 1 foot additional freeboard to 14 feet. Above that, the top of the roof ridge is the same, 21 feet, or at the 35-foot elevation, above the proposed first floor at 14 feet. Since this lowest adjacent grade around the whole building, since the lowest adjacent grade around the whole building is at the 5.5-foot elevation, the proposed height is 29.5 feet, within the zoning maximum of 30. The existing road setback is measured from the house corner at 18 feet from the line at Seagull Road, and the proposed first-floor deck is 6.2 feet from Seagull Road. The abutter setback on the northeast side exists at 3.8 feet and will be increased to 4.3 feet to a new Egress stair. The abutters on the northwest will remain at 10.6 feet, where 15 feet is required. Suitability of the site, including impact on properties. The House property is able to support the activities used as enjoyed by the owner. The grazing of the existing house and modifying its roof with dormers will not impact the neighborhood in the matter of grade changes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater bodies, or stormwater runoff. Reuse of the existing foundation, first floor parts of the roof will mean that the first stage of construction that might spread piles of excavation materials around the site will be avoided. The second floor is designed with a dormered roof and with roof deck to provide a varied roof line and reduce the impact on the streetscape from the road. Impact on visual character, views, and vistas. The proposed house is raised, consists on the first floor with a combined living, dining, kitchen, utility room, two bedrooms, two full baths. The second floor consists of one open sitting and TV-viewing area with a full bath and with access to smaller roof deck. The effect is for a more detailed and broken-up upper floor to soften the appearance from the ground level. The lower level is treated as a storage area with only a few openings for flood relief. All parts of the elevation are designed to follow pleasing proportions with familiar trims and windows and doors and siding materials. Compatibility with neighboring uses. The proposed structure is purely residential in nature and fully compatible with the residential district, where roof decks occur to access views of the neighboring sea coast of Pleasant Bay and Stage Harbor. The house's design is consistent with the house across the street and has the same details as others in the neighborhood. Adequacy of sewage flow, sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Existing house has its own septic system, which specifies for no increase of flow of the existing two-bedroom sewer. No increase of flow is contemplated. It has been reviewed by Town Health Department. The house has town water supply. Impact of traffic flow and safety. The proposed project has no effect on traffic flow and safety since the house is located on a side street. Construction vehicles will not block traffic. The house itself has space on the rear for two tandem parking space. Noise and litter. Construction is confined to the area of the site using the existing foundation and most of the existing frame on which to build should be completed over a short amount of time after the summer. Adequate of utilities and public service. The house is adequately served by water, gas, and electric service. Visual impact on the neighborhood. The new house does not differ much in style, in the style of house. Same trim set, same window, same white cedar shingles, same window and types. Height of the house is designed to match the reconstructed house across Schollop Terrace. Extended extent of the lateral expansion proposed. The house itself has not expanded, except for a small addition where it extends four feet into the back corner recess of the existing house. The small addition causes a small increase in the house permeability to absorption of rain, which is distributed to the surrounding lawns with splash blocks. The new raised house will be such that a finding by this board of substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood can be reached in a special permit granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you would like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in favor.
I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a memo. This is from Judith Giorgio, the health agent for the town. She writes, on 6/21, "I have reviewed the plan to raise and rebuild the house. Property is restricted to two bedrooms and includes an IAS septic system. Access to the septic tank and pump chamber must be always available for operation and maintenance, and no permanent structures or hardscaping should be built on top of the components. The second floor must remain an open concept with open railings at the top and the bottom of the stairs, and must not be used for sleeping purposes or in any way considered a bedroom." Now we have a note. This is from Ryan Kristinberry. He's the principal planner. He writes, on June 13th, "At their June 12th meeting, the planning board reviewed the ZVA's request for comment. After review of this request, the board voted 6 to 0 to favorably recommend the alteration of the existing drive to support improved accessibility. The board further requests a condition of the approval that the driveway be constructed of permeable material and in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. The board commends the applicant's removal of the abandoned asphalt way to the water located on the property across from Seagull Lane." Then we have a note. This is from Crystal Keon. She's the Conservation Commission Administrative Assistant. She writes, on June 5th, "The Conservation Commission is holding a public hearing on June 7th. If approved, the project will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Local Wetland Bylaw, Chapter 272, and regulations promulgated thereunder." And that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams that would like to either ask a question or speak against this application? If so, now's your chance to indicate you wish to join the meeting.
There is no one to speak in opposition or that has a question.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Paul?
I have no questions.
Randy?
I have no questions.
Jenny?
Sam, I have a question. On A3 of your, just want to make sure I'm reading it right, A3 of your packet, your drawing. I'm looking at the southwest elevation. Okay, that picture. And then the one below it is the southeast elevation, right? So it's correlating to, that's proposed, and this was in our packet. It's correlating to these two images, right, in the existing, right?
Right.
Okay. So I see an upper deck on the southeast elevation. I don't see the deck on the southwest elevation, the upper deck. Is it not there on that one, right where your cursor is?
It's really a three-foot deck. It's very short, and the railings...
Are they just not showing?
This is the upper deck. Even though this is very prominent in the elevation. Even though this is very prominent in the elevation, it's very, very slim and flush with the face of the.
Okay, so you don't see any railings? That, that is the rendering of the upper deck.
And if I may, they're hiding behind the roof line.
Oh, okay. All right, so it's like recessed? Okay.
Yeah.
So, you, okay, that was my, thank you, that was my question.
Dave.
I have no questions.
Okay. So, Sam, how, how close can a deck be to the street or to the property line? You're showing a setback of six-point-two. Can it be all the way to the street?
Wouldn't be advisable all the way to the street. It's, it's a structure, it's a structure of low impact visually. In fact, it, a, a deck adds detail and, and interest to any elevation. I usually don't make them any less than twelve feet because it's just that twelve feet is a good number for a group to gather in. It's not, but the other houses down the street, I've, I've built a deck of a similar size. So, this is equal to two other houses that I've done on that face of Seagull Road.
But the question was, what's the closest that that, that corner can be to the pavement or to the property line?
Well, I mean, i- if you adhere to the setback and it's on a road, it, it can't be closer than twenty-third, forty feet. Is that, no.
In this zoning district, it's forty feet.
Yeah, zoning district, the structure is forty feet, but we're, we don't have a lot of access to, to outside space and so this is where we're putting the deck.
It's, it's in the R forty zoning district, so it's required to have a forty-foot road setback and twenty-five-foot butter setback, just as any other structure would.
So, in this situation, Thad, there, I'm a little concerned because the way the blueprint is drawn by Thad and his employees, it shows Seagull Road pulled off from the property line, I guess, eight to ten feet. But in fact, the asphalt, and I'm doing this by memory, the asphalt goes right to the base of that stone wall, I believe.
This is, this is the asphalt.
Well, that's on the draw.
Oh, no, 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 you're right. Here is the asphalt.
We did not add the label of Seagull Road over the road so that we could see the utilities. Seagull Road is a ten-foot-wide road layout. The asphalt is more than ten feet wide and it extends on, to the properties on either side. You can see where the six-point-two is. You can follow the asphalt that goes right there. So, it is very close where five feet off of the asphalt with the proposed deck.
What was that about, the five feet?
The proposed deck is about five feet off of the asphalt. It's six feet off of the property line.
And that's not a safety concern?
The deck is also going to be eight feet above the road and behind a wall, so I'm not worried about a car driving up and hitting it.
Isn't there a stone wall?
Yes, there's a stone wall that, right underneath the six-point-two.
That is, that's a stone wall. That's a stone wall there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
As long as the people on the deck stay on the deck and the cars stay on the road, we're good.
I have a question about the property across Seagull Lane. Is that buildable in any way?
No.
So, it's going to be a, a walkway to the beach?
Yes, it's been used as a walkway for decades. It'll continue to be a walkway. It just will have less asphalt in it.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave, be second.
Need a vote on that, Buck?
Buck approves.
All approves.
Randy approves.
Beach approves.
I approve. Deliberations. Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I didn't ask the question about the deck during questions because I didn't have any questions about it, but I have comments about it. I don't think it's a safety issue, but I think that when you, if you come down the road, you turn around at outermost and then you come down the road, I can see the nice decks that you've probably built in the past and this is going to look just like those and it should have a deck. But if we could put the picture up, Sarah, of the one that it shows how it jets out, perhaps?
The side plan.
Yeah. The, the one with the house and the.
I have the house plan.
The house plan, sorry. Yeah, see how it jets out to the side? That's Seagull Road that it's approaching. And I think it looks like it's coming out too far. That's my opinion. And I think it's a substantial change in the proximity to the street and I think it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood as, as a result. If it came in a little bit, a couple of feet, probably would look better in my view because the other ones don't jet out as much in the way I see it.
Well, well, that, that's probably because of the way, the way the road layout is relative to, because they are all twelve feet.
No, I'm not saying they're not twelve feet, but the way the road is, this one does, unless, unless I'm crazy, it looks like it jets out maybe too much. And it's a substantial difference in proximity to the road.
Well, I, I, I think we could under, offer to reduce the, the width of the deck to ten feet.
Yeah, if other people, you know, I was the first one to comment and I'm open-minded. Thank you.
Jenny.
I agree with Randy. The, and I understand you said the twelve feet is an appropriate size deck for gathering and, and that would be great, but I don't, they don't, I, I think that's a luxury that we don't have with the space constraints and the proximity to Seagull Road. So, eighteen feet Seagull is to the building according to this paperwork, the existing, and then it's now six-point-two, so that theirs are twelve feet. I, I think it's not a safety thing either, but it's a, it's a visual. It's just imposing on that, that street, Seagull Lane.
Dave.
Well, I didn't, that didn't register with me, the issue with the deck. I, I tend to agree with Sam that I, I think a twelve-foot deep deck is one that's usable, you know, makes for more usable space. And, you know, when they have to, they need to raise the house up and I don't, certainly don't blame them for seeking out the benefit of, of a better deck space when they get up there. I'm, I'm just wondering, looking at the plan, Sam, I'm, I, I'm wondering if maybe you say not the corners off at a forty-five-degree angle or something in the, on plan of the deck, whether that might not alleviate the concerns that have been expressed rather than reducing the, I mean, I, I certainly go along with reducing it to ten feet in depth, but I'm just wondering if you were to, to clip those corners at a forty-five-degree angle, whether that might visually and, and it would improve the six-foot distance to the stone.
Well, that, that would, that would be acceptable. I've often done decks with clipped-off corners and I think they fit in very well with the house.
Yeah, I think it could, I mean, you know, it's not going to, as far as the usable space in the deck, probably it's not going to really significantly reduce that. It would work pretty well. Okay, that's my, be my suggestion that I would make.
Buck.
I think that's a great compromise and I would support that.
Lee.
I, I agree with everyone as well. I think, you know, this area is so challenging. We've discussed it so many times about the small lots and the FEMA regulations. I think the improvement would be a good improvement, but I would go along with the deck being clipped or whatever, so.
Paul. I think I agree with the previous comments. It makes some sense, given the narrow lot in the congested area down there, to perhaps cut that back a bit. And as Sam has indicated, doing the forty-five-degree cut on each corner would make some sense. So, I think I would tend to support that. I think under those circumstances, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Thad, let's talk about that old road.
Sure.
So, what, 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 who would have spent all that money and for what purpose? I mean, I, you know, forty years ago, was there something at the end of that road? I mean, not that you were around, I know you're younger than forty, so I don't mean that, but do you have any clue as to what it was?
No, there were activities that happened out there. I mean, even before the Horns built the cottages, there was access down to the shore.
But it was probably built, it wasn't built by, well, maybe the Horns built it. I, I don't know.
Quite possibly. There is a wall out there, a little retaining wall that's holding back dune, basically, with trees in it. And we looked through Land Corps records, we looked at the thirty-eight areas, we really couldn't tell what was going on with it. It's certainly abandoned at this point, other than the path that goes over it.
Randy, back to you on the suggestion as opposed to your idea of cutting it back, clipping the corners. What do you think of that?
I, I don't really understand what that would do. Would it just smooth it out a little or would it really, I like the two-feet part better, but please just convince me otherwise.
The clipped corners softens the, the projection of it visually.
But it still projects though to six-point-two away.
Excuse me?
It just softens the look, but it still projects that far.
But the, 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 the center portion of the, of the bay would, would be twelve feet and then the size would cut back to nine feet, actually. You'd do three feet on either side of a forty-five degree, so.
So, how close would it be to the road then? How close would it be to the road then?
Yeah.
Now, how close?
About eight feet.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so is there a consensus that you like the idea of clipping the corner or you don't care or how's everybody feel about that? Jenny.
I don't like it. I, I think what Randy's saying, so I don't understand the eight feet, Thad, it's still twelve feet, the center of it, the good part of it, just the corners, right, are cut back.
So, the deck is not parallel to the road, so if we cut away this corner, the more that's cut away, the further the closest point will be to the road.
Okay. The reason I didn't love it was because I really like your rendering, Sam. You do a fantastic job and when I'm looking again at A three and I'm looking at the deck below, it's, you know, it's just, it's very uniform. I'm looking, you know, the deck above and I'm looking at the deck below. Now, the deck below is going to have these cut corners. Just a, just an aesthetic visual. I don't think it improves your design, frankly, but that's my opinion.
My problem with cutting corners is that if you have a deck that's twelve or ten, there's, there's a lot more you can do with that deck as a homeowner, I think, if you just take the two off the front as opposed to clipping it back because you're talking about, let's say, three by three, right, a clip? Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That, I, I don't know. I, I would rather have the ten than have my corners clipped. I, I honestly would. So, I don't.
I'm, I would be satisfied with either because.
Okay. Sarah, do.
Oh, the owner, my client.
Oh. Hi, just introduce yourself.
I'm Lisa Howe. I'm the homeowner.
Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. I'm concerned with reducing the deck depth because tables tend to be, I'm thinking about a rectangular table and they can be four feet wide and then you have chairs on either side and you need to allow three feet for pulling out chairs. So, you get four plus six and that's ten feet and then you have to open the doors to the deck. So, it's problematic.
Okay, understand? Thank you. Okay, Paul.
Well, I'm not sure we've arrived at a consistency here in terms of what.
Yeah, it's, you're right.
And what can be done.
Well, I can, I can call for a straw vote on ten or twelve or, or clipped corners. Is that what you'd like?
Yeah, why don't we do that so we know where the board in general thinks with respect to that?
So, we'll start with you, Buck. So, you, you have three choices. Leave it as it is at twelve, go to ten, or you have a clipped corner.
So, I don't get ten, the end of clipped corner?
No. That was not a choice.
Yes, sir. All of it, no, I'll take the ten feet.
Lee.
I, I was not struck by the feeling that it was coming over the road. I would take the twelve feet.
Paul.
Well, I guess, you know, if, if you consider the homeowner's view on it as well, I guess I would go with the twelve feet as well.
Randy.
So, I, I do consider the homeowner's view on it and I don't see this as like a constitutional taking of your property because you're asking a lot when it comes to the setback for the road. You're already non-conforming as it is and I, I see the, the additional non-conforming as substantial and that's what we're supposed to do. So, I apologize, but I, I, I do go with the ten feet because it struck me immediately. So, that's how I look at it.
Jenny.
Well, I like, I like the ten feet better too. I like it pulling back and I liked the symmetry of the square, but I appreciate that the homeowner's here and she has a preference for, I mean, it's, it's not twelve, it's either clipped corners or ten. So, I, I could go either way with clipped corners or ten. Does that, I'm not a voting member, so I don't know if that matters too much.
All right, pick one of the two.
Ten.
All right. Dave, each.
Well, I'm, I'm, back to my original suggestion. I think I, I, I do, you know, I have a, I, I have, I'm just thinking now, my dining room is about twelve feet wide and my in, interior dining room, it's about twelve feet wide and there's just room to put a table in there and get space around it enough to get by in most instances. I, I, I do, I mean, I, I do agree with the homeowner that reducing the maximum depth from ten to twelve feet can very much change the, the abilities to lay out the deck. Does it make it impossible? No. But I just felt that my suggestion, with my suggestion, they're not giving up as much square footage. I mean, I think, what is it, twenty feet wide to the, to that? What's the width of this deck? Twenty feet? I can't read, I can't read the plan on that dimension.
Twenty-two feet, ten inches.
Twenty-two foot.
So, almost twenty-three feet. So, you, you know, you're giving up forty-six square feet if you take that back by two, two feet, whereas, you know, three foot by three, you're nine square feet is what you lose if you do those two corners off. So, it leaves them more usable space and I think, again, in my judgment and, and in terms of trying to make use of an outdoor space and laying out my deck for them, I, I just feel like it's, it's, I don't, I personally don't feel that it's pushing the issue so much that, that I, I still recommend what I'm recommending.
All right, so if I add this upright, there were votes, two votes for ten, correct? And as you know, Sam, in this world, two noes carries the weight, not three yeses or whatever it might be. So, it sounds to me like the answer that I'm searching for, that Paul will promote, a motion that's ten feet because of the two noes. And I didn't even vote, but if I voted. And I didn't even vote, but if I voted, I probably would have gone for 10, too, so. Okay, Paul?
Well, I'll move to approve the application with the revision that the deck would be at 10 feet instead of 12 feet, given the consensus of the board. We also should discuss conditions, and we proposed conditions down in that area because it's very tight. As your plan, I assume, to do construction after the season, basically?
Yeah.
So I'll propose conditions which are, if I can find it among all the paperwork here.
Paul, I, I should advise you that the owner has access to the land across the street, and contractors can park all, all they want there, won't, won't interfere with any summer traffic, but I recognize that.
One last hurrah for the old road.
Yeah, well, when I, when I was down there looking at the property, there were contractors all over the place, as you know. But I guess I will suggest a condition that all construction activity and vehicles would be contained on-site or at a neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, or if there is no property owner involved, and you can park across the street, then you can park at that location. That between June 15th and September 15th, there would be no exterior construction allowed, no work would be permitted on weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only. Do we have conditions that we need to impose based on the planning board recommendation?
I don't believe so.
That's case?
I believe Thad's plans do call out a shell driveway, a gravel.
A pervious driveway, likely be shell.
Okay, and no obstruction to the flow of water? Okay.
Dave Veach seconds. Okay, Buck?
Buck approves.
Paul approves.
Randy approves.
Dave Veach approves.
I approve, that's unanimous vote. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Can you move on to the next question?
Okay, Sarah, we're on to 23-053, please.
Application number 23-053, Timothy R. Ryan, Carrie William G. Litchfield, Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owner of property located at 299 Cranberry Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham assessor's map, 15K Block 7, Lot 7. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling, garage, and shed, and the construction of a new dwelling, guest house, and shed. Also proposed is the expansion of the driveway. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 25.4 feet from the road and partially within the conservancy district. The existing garage is non-conforming, and it is located 22.6 feet from the road and partially within the conservancy district. The existing shed is non-conforming, and it is located 6.7 feet from the road and partially within the conservancy district. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that will be located 27.5 feet from the road, where a 40-foot setback is required, one foot from the coastal conservancy district, where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed guest house will be non-conforming, in that it will be located 14 feet from the coastal conservancy district, where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,740 square feet, 5.9%, and the proposed building coverage is 4,388 square feet, 9.5% or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 71,600 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D2B of the protective by law.
Mr. Litchfield?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill Litchfield, here on behalf of the applicant, Tim Ryan. Tim is not here today, but Carrie Felice is. She allows Tim to live in the house from time to time. And also with us are Paul Muldoon of Paul Muldoon Architects, and Thad Aldridge of East Southeast Engineering. We know that you have been out to the site, and if you went out prior to Tuesday, you were greeted by a field of flags. It was somewhat overwhelming. I've been down to the house a number of times, I've been to the house many, many times over the years, but for this particular project, and I had not been down recently. If you've been more recently than that, you have seen that some of the flags have been removed, and the area was sprayed to show what was going on. It is a complex site, because it is challenged by flood zones, conservancy districts, the obvious one on the north side, Pleasant Bay, but also over the left-hand side from the old, what some have called the Rogers Cranberry Bog. So it is, while a large site, almost two acres, it is challenged in a number of ways. And because this is an important project, and because we have obviously some of the butters with considerable concerns, I'd like, if I could, Mr. Chairman, after a few more opening remarks, to have Thad talk about the site, then Paul talk about the architectural plans for the site, and then I'll go into the criteria.
Excellent.
Thank you. The, Tim and Carrie have owned the property for about two and a half years. Prior to 2015, like many, but not all, but many houses in the neighborhood, it had been in one family for a very long time. Tim and Carrie would like to continue the long fam, or start and then continue, the long family tradition in the neighborhood, because it's a spectacular site, a wonderful neighborhood, a fine location, and Tim and Carrie want it to be a long-term family home. They also recognize, of course, concerns, environmental concerns, with which they have, they've addressed with the Conservation Commission, also neighborhood concerns, and they've tried to address those, and Paul in particular, in modifying his plans to address some of the points that were made to him over the months. But if I could, and I would also simply point out that I first spoke with Tim and Carrie, I'm going to guess, very close to two years ago. This has not been a short project, to try to put together a plan that fits the site, and I think that we, I think we can ultimately find that this plan does, in fact, fit the site. So with that, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Thad to talk about the site, and then go into Paul for the plans.
Good afternoon. For the record, Thad Aldridge, East Southeast. I've provided you with a simplified site plan that has pretty much everything turned off. The site plan did get a little confusing with this one, or overwhelming, because there is a lot going on on the property. If I can start from the north, we have Pleasant Bay, there's a coastal beach with a revetment, a velocity flood zone intercepts that, that revetment, and there's a coastal bank that commences up there. The velocity zone would be the limit of the conservancy district, or the coastal bank is the limit of the conservancy district, and there's a 50-foot setback from there. To the right of the existing home, there is an A-zone floodplain, and it's one with less wave action, less excitement, but still flooding. And again, that, that intercepts a coastal bank for part of it. The existing home took out a piece of that slope when they constructed it, and then that A-zone continues into the middle of the property. There was a zapper here, but, at any rate, that, thank you, Sarah. So there's a, oh, thank you. Okay. So yes, that A-zone continues along, comes right, pretty close to the tennis court, and then cuts around to the garage, where that was altered when, when the garage was constructed. And just to share, when these structures went in, the floodplain was different. The floodplain has increased over time, so they, 1998 was certainly lower than the, than the 2014, and it was, I would say it was the 80s that we started on the NFIP. That floodplain continues, there's an existing shed that straddles it now. Coming in from the other side, we have a floodplain coming from the old Cranberry Bog, and an A-zone, a velocity zone, an A-zone, then we have our, our 50-foot from there. One thing that didn't make it to the confusing site plan is this 50-foot line. That's the setback from the floodplain itself. Under conservation, they no longer have a setback to floodplain, so it, it was kept off for their purposes, and it should have been added for yours. Could you scroll down a little bit, please? So this area right in here, and that area right there are the two places where a building could be placed that conformed to the bylaw. That's 40 feet off the streets, 50 feet off the floodplain in coastal conservancy district, and that little bit there. We are in the AC/EC as well, but that only matters for conservation more than anything else. If you could go to the photos. So as Mr. Litchfield stated, we did go out and we sprayed everything. We then took drone photos, and we highlighted them, and we've provided you with pictures of that, that hopefully make up for us not making the site completely clear for you at the, at the onset. So here we have the existing garage, the proposed guest house, that's pulling everything out of the floodplain. The driveway would come around, this part of the driveway and the part that's in the existing garage, that's going to be constructed out of a grass pave, so it just looks like lawn, but that will hold the, the weight of vehicles to be able to turn around. One of the concerns that the neighbors have expressed are the delivery vehicles. How do they get in and out? Where do they use roadways? And how they can be directed to use this area to get in, to get out? Could you go to the next place? So here's the existing tennis court, and there's where the sports court is proposed. We have some of the existing, or the proposed building here, along with the wall where the patio will be, and the walkway. The existing walkway will come out, and the proposed building is inside the existing building here, because the part of the building that exists within the floodplain will be removed. Could we have the next place? And this is just another view of something very similar. And one more. Yes, the proposed building is inside the footprint, so staking that is, it's quite a challenge. If I could hand it over to Paul to review the architectural plans.
Good afternoon, Paul Muldoon, Muldoon Architects. And as Thad and Bill before me have stated, this was a very challenging site and a very challenging project. We've been, made the attempt to be very intentional and very sensitive to what we're doing, both from a, a sighting standpoint, from a massing standpoint. Our, our footprint is, is a direct relation to the challenges of the site. We've placed the, the main massing of our, our new structure, for the most part, over the original footprint, pulling it out of the floodzone on this eastern side. This first corner here has been pulled back so that it is outside of that floodzone, and thereby, the entire structure is now outside of the floodzone proposed here. The sighting and, and the, the massing and the volume of the, the main part of the structure, the main part of the house, is meant to mimic the existing. We have a, a one-story structure, the primary bedroom on this eastern corner with a low roof line, similar to what is there. We then step up for a, a one-story structure that has clear-story dormers, that's the kitchen and the dining room space, again, very similar to the existing program, and then a, a, a two-story structure at this highest, or second level down, that has one bedroom and one bathroom upstairs, and a, and a family room entry sequence down below it. We then get to our, our pivot, our, our viewing station, our stair structure. This allows the, the, the two forms to connect to one another and, and bend and, and form this sort of inside V shape that we have here. The structure itself is underneath the 30-foot height limitation, and it creates our, our stair access from, from the first floor plan up to the second floor plan into this small viewing station at, at the very top. As we continue on to the structure, this added guest wing here is, is two bedrooms up, a family room and a single-car garage low, and, and as we come from the, the viewing station, the, the volume and the, the width of the structure reduces, so we're, the hierarchy of spaces is being built into the center portion of the house. The, the guest room wing itself is strategically placed and tucked into the, the western corner, so this, this sloping land that is, was deemed by the Conservation Commission as a wonderfully landscaped area, we're maintaining as much of that as we possibly can, and slightly pushing our, our form into that, that slope. This is strategically placed between the setback line on the western side and that floodplain that wraps into the center of the, the property. That, that floodplain does wrap into this area here, and then the setback sits behind. So this is, this projection is placed in between those two areas. The proposed materials are, are very similar to what you'd expect for a Cape Cod house. We have red cedar roof shingles, we have white cedar sidewall shingles, white painted trim, white windows. We have small areas of, of accent where we have some metal roofing, and we have small areas of accent where we have some vertical siding. Through discussions, we, we've had a, a handful of discussions with neighbors, and we've, we've ac- we asked on a few different material discussions where we've reduced the amount of, of vertical siding, we, we've augmented some of the metal roof locations, and, I think that's it. As far as the floor plans, our, our cellar is, you can go to, this is the existing footprint. Continue on, please. So we have a, a small area of full-height basement at 7'6". This is about 580 square feet, or 20% of the footprint. The remaining footprint is accounted for in crawl space, where the slab will be at the flood-level height and providing just enough area for mechanical space installation and maintenance. The first floor plan is, again, comprised of a, a primary suite on this eastern corner. We have an open-area kitchen and dining space, family room, entry foyer and bathroom, and then a, another living room space and a one-car garage with some utility space, laundry space, bathrooms, that sort of thing. Second floor is open to below on these, these areas here of, of one story. We have one bedroom that faces the, the view to the north, with some bathrooms and hallway space, and then two bedrooms along this guest wing, with a, a shared bathroom in between. The viewing station here, you can see, is an, an open stair, open railing. The floor area, the letter of the law says it's 136 square feet. The usable area is about 100 square feet. It's intended for a couple of comfy chairs, a pair of binoculars, and that's really it. If you can go back to the elevations, please? And the elevations here, there's, there's a lot going on based on the, the bend of the structure. If Sarah could go back to the cover sheet? Thank you. A number of discussions had on-site during our conservation meeting, a number of the, the, well, maybe the whole neighborhood came out and, and joined us for that walkthrough. We talked about materials, we talked about lighting. Part of that discussion was to ensure that all of our lighting is focused downward. So we have a couple of, of sconces here on, on, above the garage and on that entry door there, that will be focused downward. The remaining exterior lights will be underneath roof lines, is either a, a pendant or a recessed light. We have a covered porch on the front side that has a sloped roof, we have a covered porch on the north side that has a flat roof, but again, the lighting will be underneath that area and, and placed downwards. We also discussed lighting along the sports court. There will be no high lighting coming down onto the sports court at, at, at all. We will have some low-level landscape lighting to help light pathways, but that's, that's And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you. Mr. Litchfield?
Fortunately, you get me again. Thad Eldridge, if we could go to the more complex site plans. How about the messy one? The one right in the middle. So we put everything on this one. Just to run through the existing and the proposed very briefly. So with the primary dwelling, the existing is within the floodplain contour. We're now getting it out of the floodplain contour. On the water side, we're going from an existing setback to the Conservancy District of 28 feet. The proposed is 28 feet to the porch, but 40 feet to the house. The street setback is non-conforming, where the deck is 25'4". The proposed is 27'5", making things a little better. The building itself is 27'4" and the proposed is 29.1. And as Paul mentioned, we're really, with the addition, we're pinched between the floodplain contour and the abutter setback. With the guesthouse to the south, the existing garage is in the Conservancy District. The guesthouse is proposed to be 14 feet on the right side of the Conservancy District. Not quite the 50, but certainly an improvement. The existing garage is 22.6 from the road. The proposed guesthouse is 42.1 from the road. In the center of the property, starting with the shed, the shed is 6.7 feet off of the road. We're relocating that to the center of the property where it will be well over 40 feet from the road. The existing shed straddles the Conservancy District. Our original plan was to put the shed one foot from the Conservancy District with a change through conservation. We're now 23 feet from the Conservancy District. The court itself, the tennis court, is within the 50-foot on two sides, and the proposed sports court will be within 50 feet on one side. There are three areas where we're proposing to fill in the floodplain under the permitted section of the bylaw. So at the house, there is the part of the building that was existing within the slope or cut the slope where the floodplain extends to. That will be taken away, and the slope there will be restored to preconstruction conditions. At the garage, that will be taken away, and the slope will be more or less restored to preconstruction conditions. They did want a continuous slope. We do want to get the turnaround at the bottom. And then the other is the septic system. The best location for the septic on the lot is right in the middle. It's within floodplain, and under the bylaw, we're allowed to fill for septic purposes. So we've taken advantage of that fill by being able to cite the sports court further from Far End Lane. The driveways, which would be under the Section 9 special permit. This existing driveway is basically Cranberry Lane, though it's not within the Cranberry Lane layout. It also connects with a neighbor's property, though few people drive that loop. Emergency vehicles would if needed. The alternative to this driveway would be to actually construct Cranberry Lane through the vegetated area in the middle, and we'd rather not do that. We'd rather maintain that access out to the water for the neighborhood. With that, there are a couple of parking spaces that are being augmented down below. The applicants would like to get to their house and obviously their garage. So we have a second curb cut being proposed, which represents the shortest distance through the Conservancy District to get to the garage. It's just that little bit in there. The alternative for one driveway would be to come through the lot or in some other way make a much longer driveway. Hopefully that answers questions, but if there are more, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Thad, and thank you, Paul. And thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Go into the criteria as to adequacy of site, including building covered in setbacks. We have obviously a large conforming lot, adequate for a somewhat curious-looking mid-century home which exists now with structures on the property which are non-conforming as to street, sideline, and coastal Conservancy District setbacks. If you approve the special permit, you can do so based on a finding that the site is adequate for the new house and for the guesthouse. As you've heard, the plan eliminates or decreases several non-conformities, and it would result in a conforming coverage of 9.5% of the buildable upland and just 6% of the overall lot. As to compatibility of size, on the third page of the handout, there is a comparison of neighboring properties. It's a neighborhood of large lots. There's only one of 20,000 square feet, one of 38,000 square feet. All the others are more than an acre. The homes are of various sizes with gross floor area, gross floor area ranging from 2,000 to 12,000 square feet. They were built between 1740 and 2007. It's a variety of sizes in homes, but they all, almost without exception, fit the neighborhood. A number of them have been in the same family for a very long time. The new home, if you approve it, will be compatible with its surroundings. It's situated well below the elevated neighboring properties and is consistent as to gross floor area and living area. Sarah, if you would be kind enough to bring up that cover page once again, I may want to refer to that in a moment. As to the extent of increase in non-conformity, we have multiple street, multiple non-conformity, street, sideline, and floodplain. As noted, we're eliminating the street setback issue. The house itself has moved out of the Coastal Conservancy District, and as such, and with the other changes, there is no increase whatsoever in non-conformity. And as to suitability of site, the site has been developed for residential use since There are, there have been extensive iterations, numerous iterations, and extensive changes in the plans in light of the impact of the natural environment that has been appropriate review by the Conservation Commission with significant mitigation plantings. An order of conditions, I believe, has been written, has it not, or subject to this board's approval. The planning board comment commends the plan for its sensitivity as to driveway and for the reduction in size of the tennis court. There's an obvious question, and I know a number of you appropriately spoke with that about some of the questions on the plans, and one of the issues that I think may be in your mind is, you know, should we be building houses in the floodplain area or adjacent to the floodplain area? Houses exist in the floodplain area. I won't say every house of the 42 houses on Eastwood Point, but most of them have the same issue. The same holds true to virtually everything on Little Beach, and I don't think there's, you know, you hear a Little Beach house, what, 12 times a year? I won't say every meeting, but every other meeting there's something at Little Beach which is in front of you. The same holds true for Ridgevale, for Cockle Cove, for Lanale Lane and Old Wharf Road. There are a number of areas which are going to have issues and challenges in the future. This house is currently protected by a revatment. If need be, changes could be proposed with appropriate, with, with the right set of circumstances, i.e. risk of the structure, but that's not an issue before you today. Right now, we have a project which is environmentally sensitive and is environmentally appropriate, but there's nothing unique about this site in terms of being challenged by the floodplain. As to scale, sighting, mass, views, and visitors, effect on streetscape, the architectural appeal of what is there now is arguably somewhat limited, but I think Paul has done a good job. I'll start by saying, I mean, you, depending on which way you came, either down Old Harbor or down Stony Hill, if you went down Stony Hill, you saw something that this, you saw a lot of somethings which this is not. This is not a gambrel. This is not something shoehorned into what is some people think is the current Chatham style. This is instead something which is appropriate and respectful of the site. It has cedar shingle siding, red cedar shingle wood shingles roof, and I think Paul has learned it with, with Kerry's guidance, has done, produced an attractive and thoughtful design. I wanted that up because it shows that it's nestled into the hillside. If you go up Far End Lane, that hill is on your right. We're not on the top. We're down below, and I think that's, that's an appropriate way to look at this. This is not going to be in the top, this is not going to be the lighthouse at Chatham. This is instead way down in a valley. It's cited to preserve rather than inhibit water views from the neighboring homes. As to compatibility of use, there's no change. It's a residential use. The health agent has a question about the septic systems, and obviously we will necessarily meet Board of Health requirements. There's no impact on traffic flow and safety. Some of the abutters are here, I think, can attest that Cranberry Lane is not a high-velocity volume for traffic, at least when you get down this far. As to noise and litter, there's not a noise issue, but I do want to speak a little bit about the impact on the neighborhood. Paul has already talked about the downward lighting around the house and around the sports court. We're reducing the size of the tennis court. I know there are a couple of tennis players on this board, but they can perhaps come and visit the sports court if they would like to do so if you approve the special permit, but it is not going to be inherently noisy, quite the opposite. And I confirm something that I already know. The gambrels are usually accompanied by swimming pools. It astonishes me that people come to Chatham and build swimming pools, but that's a separate issue. They do. Tim and Kerry have no plans and no desire for a swimming pool, so I think the neighbors can be, there are understandable concerns about McMansionization of the neighborhood. I think it'd be assuaged by what is here proposed. The utilities are all present. That's not an issue. As to the issue in fact, which is whether replacing this, the existing structures with a new house and a guesthouse while eliminating or reducing non-conformities and still complying as to coverage, question is whether that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the current non-conforming structures. I think that you can find that it is not. This is admittedly a difficult lot, a challenging one, and we understand the sensitivities of the neighbors, some of whom are third-generation members of their family. But the new house will be removed from the Coastal Conservancy District. Thad has given you the specifics about the other setback improvements. And even one of the notes that the chair will read from an abutter acknowledges that it's, quote, "It's attractive and set on the lot in a way that minimizes its footprint", as shown there. With the reduction in hardscape and the mitigation, it will be a significant environmental improvement. With Paul and Muldoon, Paul Muldoon and Thad Eldridge, I think with Tim and Kerry's guidance, I think they've succeeded in a design that fits the site and won the approval of the Conservation Commission. And as I said at the outset, Tim and Kerry have worked for two years with their design team on plans which are respectful of the site, of the bylaw, and of the neighborhood. And as Paul had indicated, design elements have been adjusted to meet some of the concerns expressed by neighbors. There may be some elements of that plan that a given board member or a given neighbor might not choose, but the overall proposal, when considered under the legal requirement of review, consideration of substantial detriment, warrants approval rather than the finding that that is substantially more detrimental. Whether viewed from Pleasant Bay or the street so-called, the design is respectful of the setting and, again, is minimized by its sighting. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think that you can find the proposed home is not substantially more detrimental, and we'd certainly be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here today or on Microsoft Teams who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate you'd like to join the meeting.
I see no one to speak in favor.
Okay. I'll read the correspondence. First, we have a memo. This is from Judith Georgio, our health agent here in town. She writes on 6/21. I have reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild the dwellings. They are proposing a new four-bedroom dwelling and a one-bedroom garage/guesthouse. This may be an increase in flow and require the installation of an IA septic system. The buildable upland is 46,000 square feet. Approval by the BOH is required. Now, we have a note. This is from Ryan Kristenberry, who's the principal planner for the town of Chatham. He writes on June 13th. At their June 13th meeting, the planning board reviewed the ZBA's request for comment. After review of this request, the board voted 6-0 to make a favorable recommendation to approve the alternative access. The unique floodplain contours of the subject property render the proposed design as the most suitable for providing access. The board further requests a condition of approval that the driveway be constructed of permanent material and in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water. The board commends the applicant for reducing the impervious area of the game court. Then we have a note. This is from Crystal Keon, Conservation Administrative Assistant. She writes on June 5th. The Conservation Commission held a public hearing on March 1st and May 24th. This project is scheduled for an order of conditions on June 14th, when it will be conditioned to meet the performance standards under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Town of Local Wetland Bylaw, Chapter 272, and regulations promulgated thereunder. Then we have a letter. This is from the folks at Protect Our Past, and it's written by Ellen Briggs, the founder and president of Protect Our Past. She writes on June 22nd. Protect Our Past has been told that the existing structure at this address is not historically significant, though we have not had a chance to evaluate it officially. Given that it is established that this house can be demolished, we will instead address its proposed replacement. Our concern for the identity of Chatham includes maintaining the recognized and well-established iconic street and seascapes. Though 299 Cranberry Lane is tucked away from the streets, it is highly visible to the boating community on Pleasant Bay. Unfortunately, this proposed architectural design is reminiscent of what is found in the Hamptons. Hence, Chatham is gaining a reputation of being Chahamptoned. That's quote-unquote. Too many houses along the water are losing their charm. From 299 Cranberry, the architectural drawing, it appears that the architectural elements on this design reflect that of mega mansions found in California where they climb the hills. The third story, which I would call the tower room, has zero relationship to Cape Cod architecture, nor do the materials chosen for the roof. North Chatham has been known for its quaint seaside community. To watch it be sterilized with such an architectural proposal is sad. What's gone, lost forever. In addition, Protect Our Past is concerned about what happens to the materials, the wood, and of what may be demolished. It should be saved and made available for restoration projects rather than be dumpstered. FYI, the upfront carbon footprint created with demolition and new builds takes 10 to 40 years to recover. It all goes into the air now. This is another reason why Protect Our Past seriously seeks alternatives to demolition. Please send this proposal back to the drawing board. Then we have an email. This is from Susan and Robert Wilson. They write on June 14th, and their address is 262 Cranberry Lane. We are very much interested in being good neighbors to the Ryans. To that end, we are responding to the ZBA letter inviting concerns to their project. One, the mass of the proposed residence seems to be out of keeping with other older homes in the immediate area. The footprint of the proposed residence is nearly double the size of the pre-existing home. 5% of the total property versus 9.5. Number two, the view of the proposed house from the water and the seascape would be consistent with other nearby homes. Oh, I'm sorry. Would not be consistent with other nearby homes. Number three, other concerns include the abundant lighting which is directed toward the front of our house and which shines into our living room and dining room windows, and the noise factor coming from the proposed sport court. Thank you for your consideration. Then we have a note. This is an email from Carolyn Parker. She's at 224 Cranberry. She writes on June 20th. It's hard for the Ryans to be moving into a neighborhood where we've all been for over 100 years. Our quiet dirt road with old cottages has been slowly transformed by people who say they want this to be their quote-unquote "forever" home, only to build huge houses and flip them, leaving us to feel tricked into approving their projects. We want to be good neighbors, but at what price? The Ryans' house is large and non-conforming in all areas. Could it be worse? Yes. Yes. It's attractive and set on a lot in a way that minimizes its footprint. I'm objecting for the concept of large homes replacing cottages, not the Ryans' particular design, although a sport court, just saying. And that is the extent of the correspondence. So have questions? Well, first of all, we'll see if there's anybody either here or on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak. And they have either a question or they wish to speak against this. So this is your opportunity, folks, if you wish to speak, to join the meeting. Just indicate. Raise your hand if you want. I'm sorry, you cannot speak from your chair. The television folks, the television folks would give us a real bad time if we'd let you do that. To say nothing of the director of community, developer, the town manager and all the select people. Please identify yourself.
Susan Wilson. And I just was going to say that I think that the letters written speak for themselves.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? How about a Microsoft team, Sarah?
There is no one on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak.
Okay, then we'll go to questions from the board. Let's see, Ginny, I think you're in line.
Where do I start? Let me start with the seascape. A2.2, is this, this is the northern elevation image, the front of the house, which, that's what I consider the front of the house because it's waterfront. We've been seeing a lot of the other image, which is the backside of the house, but is this, I know that the house has the, what did you call it, a jog or an angle? So this is a one, this is a little flatter image, but this isn't really, or it's a close proximity to what you'd see from Pleasant Bay?
The, well, it's Paul's plan, it's not mine, but the north, maybe Sarah could bring that up, I think she's working on it.
Yeah.
It's not flat, well, I'll defer to Paul if I could, Mr. Chairman.
This is the ocean view here, where we have three concentric cape-style roof lines with shed dormers attached into them. There is a projection of a flat roof-covered area there where you see the posts running down to a patio space.
On the right-hand side?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, right there, yeah.
So this roofline here is a flat roofline with posts running down from that extension. But again, the cape-style roofline that runs and builds as it projects into the slope, you can see some of the slope, and we've cut it off so you can see more of the elevation, but the slope gently rises up where this portion of the home will not be visible from the water.
Okay. It won't be at all or a little bit?
I would expect not at all.
Okay.
The existing home, and Thad or Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, the existing home runs 65 feet east-west. The proposed house runs 62 feet east-west, but it has the jog to the, if you're standing in the water, the jog to the right, which, and I don't know what that dimension is, but it's maybe 20 feet, just eyeballing it, 20 to 25 feet from here to here. So it's a third longer, roughly speaking. But that part which is, well, I'm looking at the page X11, that the existing floor plan is 65 feet, 65 feet, four and a half inches east-west. And then looking at sheet A10, it's 61.9, but again, there's the jog to the...
From edge to edge is that 62-foot dimension. And then we've got another about 20-foot extension here again, but that sloping hill makes it invisible from the water.
It's about 30 feet, at its closest, it's about 30 feet back from the front as well as being behind the earth.
Yeah, no, I was at the site, and I know it's built in that slope going up, smart, I understand the whole dynamic of the property, which is why I didn't think the whole thing, but I wanted to get a visual for how much of that you're really not going to see from Pleasant Bay. So you really think you're not going to see that corner? I said really, Mr. Litchfield, because on X10, I see it 65 feet is the current house, but that's really the whole house, that's the whole square. And if you add, and now I'm looking at A11, it's 61 feet across, plus 14 on the side, plus 44 on the side. Now, I understand that's not all frontage to Pleasant Bay, but it is the size of the home, correct?
Well, it's not 14 and 44 going east-west. That's why I said it was approximately 20 to 30 feet. I hadn't been asked that question, but Paul's confirming that I'm approximately right.
Okay, I mean, if I'm reading it wrong, I see 61 across.
Yeah.
I see 14 right here.
I'm sorry, maybe you could help me where the 14 is, or Sarah can. It's not my plan, I'll let Paul.
Flip to the next one. The lineal dimensions you have are correct.
And then 44, okay, so, I mean, I am getting to the mass. I understand the seascape is where I started, and I think that that's really important. We often talk about streetscape and fitting in neighborhoods, and there's, and so the seascape is very important. But when you look at A11, you see, I mean, there's been a lot of reference to the existing house, and I appreciate the comments, Mr. Muldoon, that you're making about the, you know, the architectural elements, the shed dormers being cape and everything, but there are a lot of windows on that side, the seascape, and from a, you know, expansion of the house, I mean, I do think it's fair to add the 14 feet and the 44 feet, which I did, and you get 122 feet. That's twice the size of the current house, so that's all I'm saying. Now, it's at the end of the lane, so from a neighboring perspective, you don't see it, but I think you might see elements of that from Pleasant Bay, so that was, anyway, that was, I'm getting into deliberation.
You certainly would see a portion of it, no question. Obviously, the 61-feet facade, and I understand the numbers that you're adding, but that 58 feet isn't 58 feet east-west, it's going back.
Understood, yeah. No, I do understand that. Okay, so I wanted to touch on seascape. What is the flooring of the sport court?
Can you answer that? The material for the sports court flooring?
I believe that's going to be an asphalt.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
It's a basketball court.
So, you know, there's a lot of reference to pulling out the tennis court and creating, you know, an improvement there, and it is, the sports court is half the size roughly of, but according to, I think it was this plan, a portion of the sports court is in the floodplain, whereas the tennis court miraculously was not at all in the floodplain. So I'm just pointing that out. I mean, I think a sports court's a cool idea, I really do. I think it's a contemporary version of a tennis court, so I'm not opposed to that, but I just wanted to point out that there's been a lot of discussion around, and I think you did a great job of pulling a lot of it out of the floodplain, but there are still portions of it that are in there and very close to CCD.
Yeah, and if I could respond to that, and you're exactly right, that the sports court is in the floodplain, but of course, as you know, the floodplain rules allow for certain things, non-habitable things, to be in the flood zone, and I'm not sure that this would be contrary to the requirements.
And if I may, the sports court is going into the current floodplain that will be filled for the septic system, so it won't be in the floodplain when it's constructed, it'll be raised above it.
Okay, Thad, I'm going to ask you a question that you, I thought you said this at the beginning of your, I thought you said this, I wrote it down. When the garage was added, the current garage, you said, when the garage was added, the floodplain was altered. What does that mean?
Well, the slope was altered. It wasn't in the floodplain when the garage was...
But now it is.
And now the garage is in the floodplain.
So how do we prevent that from happening with the new guest house, which is behind it, not in the floodplain? But when that's built, would that potentially create what you said here, that happened when the current garage was built?
There are estimates that sea level is going to rise, the floodplain is going to rise with it, and there's not much we can do about it. They show pictures of Florida completely underwater and of Cape Cod completely underwater, so it's beyond our control.
I understand. Two more que...
I'm sorry, I think what you were saying was that the slope, which is now in the floodplain, the slope was altered when the garage was built, and the slope is going to be restored, and that restoration is now in the floodplain and presumably beneficial to the floodplain.
Beneficial to the floodplain, to the bank, and bringing it back closer to what it was before the garage was constructed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Muldoon, you mentioned portions of the house are metal roof and vertical siding, and then you mentioned that you had this neighborhood on-site. Is that being changed or just minimized? Could you elaborate a little more on that?
We had more metal roofing on top of the viewing station, was metal, and we had a lot more vertical siding along the exposed guest wing. So the plans you see before you are altered according to that discussion.
And were the neighbors' comments because it's not that sort of less traditional cape material?
Personal preference.
Okay, coming from the neighbors.
Yes.
Okay, one more question, driveway easement. Is that for the, you know, the new driveway requires the easement? I see it on one of these site plans. Was that new, was it existing, was it part of the purchase of the house? I'm just curious to know about...
No, the neighbor's driveway requires an easement to be on the applicant's site. So there's an existing driveway easement for the neighbor to be able to get to their home.
But their driveway's been there, their driveway's existing.
Yes, and there's an existing driveway easement in place for that driveway to legally be there.
And so it's Mr. Rogers' easement?
Yes.
Okay. And does Mr. Ryan need any easement to have a portion of that driveway?
No, it's his land.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a non-exclusive easement for the Rogers to be able to get to that home.
There was no change in granting or easements or otherwise when Tim purchased the property, that was all pre-existing.
Okay. And one more question about the driveway. You're keeping the existing driveway and adding the new driveway?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Dave?
I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay.
If something comes up, I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Buck?
So in the write-up we were given on the summary page, it said the existing building coverage was 2740. Is that, and on the sheet that you handed out, Bill, that is source, the data is from the assessors and the architects and the surveyor, it shows living area existing, 299 Cranberry is 2194.
Correct, yeah.
What's going on there? The garage?
No, the, there's a partial second floor in the existing house. If I'm not, maybe the number is wrong.
Oh, okay. Well, I was, I was looking at gross floor area, I'm sorry.
Yeah, gross floor area includes the garage.
Okay. I thought, I got it. So the living area is the square footage of the first and second floor?
Yeah, living area is, it's a nebulous term, and it's not actually part of your considerations technically, but it basically means conditioned area.
All right, so I'll stick with footprint. And the footprint data comes from the assessor's office?
Actually, I think it comes from the Southeast Plan.
How about for all the other homes on Cranberry?
All the others comes from the assessors. The assessor's records are all we have because we don't have records for every, you know, I can't expect Mr. Eldridge or any other surveyor to go out and do the plans of the 8,000 parcels in town. But the assessors say, for instance, that this parcel is 1.599 acres. If I multiply that by 43, 560, I may get 71,600, but I don't. Instead, I use what the surveyor engineer tells me the actual number is.
Don't have a problem with that at all. In your experience, the, and I don't know if this is for you or the surveyor, is the accuracy of the data from the assessors 98% accurate or less than 90%? Well, I mean, we're talking about numbers to the nearest foot. I was just wondering how much we, how much stock we put in those numbers. 68% of 95%? I mean, it's a, sometimes they're right, sometimes they're off? Thank you.
What I could do, if it would help, is to pass around a neighborhood map, which again comes from the assessors, but I think you've got that. Sarah, do they still get that? Yeah, so you already have that, and that shows that they're approximately correct. We can see that 255, which is the old cape going down on the left, is much smaller. I'm not convinced that there's a dramatic discrepancy, assuming these are correct, that they're all we have.
All right, so let's stick with the 2740. So it looks like to me in the post, page three, I think Thad called it, post-conditions plan, there's a significant amount of building coverage in the buffer between the floodplain and the 50-foot setback. And I was wondering, what, where is it in the bylaw that we get to ignore the 30-foot setback or 30-foot setback to the Conservancy District? Why is this possible?
Well, we're here under a special permit or a change, alteration or extension. In the first plan that I showed, the simplified site plan, there's a shaded area, and that would be the only spot that a house could be, or any structure could be built that would conform to the 50-foot setback to the Conservancy District.
So the bylaw says that there's no other place to build, we can build in the buffer?
I'll leave it to Bill.
No, you may have noted that there has been a movie, Netflix movie being made in Chatham, and a sideline went on across the street from my office, there's a house out at Eastwood Point, it's, I think, two acres. Much of the filming is being done there. You know how much buildable upland there is there? It replaced a non-conforming house. There's nothing, I tried to touch on that earlier, we have entire neighborhoods where if you were starting afresh, you could not build a house. But the state law and the bylaw recognizes that because houses existed before zoning or under prior zoning, that you can come to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit based upon a finding that the proposed change is not substantially more detrimental, as you know.
So the current, the existing footprint is 2740, and now you're going up to 4388. Where is it, or is there not, we're coming in because it is non-conforming, and you can now go up all the way to the maximum coverage, even though the only reason you're able to come here is because it's non-conforming, correct?
That's true of everything that you hear.
Okay, so it's non-conforming, and that then allows them to explode the house?
Prior to 2014, it did. Prior to 2014, if you had a non-conformity, you had a 10,000-square-foot lot, the zone is now R20. Not that you ever did this, but you could go to 20% coverage from 5% coverage, just on... just on, just by virtue of having a single non-conformity. In other words, you could, you could create new non-conformities. You could, it's your word, explode the house. This board didn't do that, but it was allowable.
I think it was Article 46, if I'm not mistaken, 2014.
No, actually, it actually was a state Supreme Judicial Court decision, but that's neither here nor there.
Okay, well, we were, we were breaking ground.
I mean, you recognize, of course, that we have, as I said, approximately 8,000 parcels and something between 6,000 and 7,000 of them are non-conforming because of zoning changes. I know you know that.
Okay. And the last question is, number five of our criteria is site scale and mass. I've asked this question before, so it's not new. We have almost a 50% increase in the coverage. And we're, and, and I realize that the viewing platform is what's bumping the 30 feet. So the whole house isn't, the whole ridge of the whole dwelling isn't 30 feet.
Correct.
But when we look at mass, I sometimes think of volume and cubic feet. Did anybody come up with how much the cubic feet increased?
No, I know that that issue has been raised by you in prior hearings. And if the board would like us to try to do it, we could do it for the house that we are presenting. But I, to-
That's all I'm asking, for the one you're presenting.
If you, if the board would like that going forward, we can do that. I think what you want is gross floor area plus ceiling height.
I just, I was just wondering what the cubic feet is now to what the cubic feet is. Because that's mass.
I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer. And, and, and again, the reason that I started doing these comparisons for you two decades ago was to give you something by way of comparison. It's now become an expectation, which is fine. But in terms of providing cubic size, could only be done for the house involved, so there'd be no comparison to anything else. Possibly.
But it, it was a question. That's all.
Lee.
Am I, am I correct in seeing that the house, proposed house, is actually farther away from the coastal Conservancy District? And the beach, the, the bank?
So-
Because there's a-
The dimension from the porch is still 28 feet. The building itself is about 40 feet. But the, the amount, there's a funny piece that sticks out. We're coming back from there. The real setback is, is around the front side or backside, the southeast corner.
Yeah, no, yes, I see that. But in terms of, I, I, when I was there, I felt like it was very close to the edge of the bank. And I like the fact that you guys have pulled it back a little bit.
Even though there is a revetment, we are respectful of the ocean and we are retreating.
Thank you.
Paul.
Bill, do I understand that Criteria 12 of the non-conforming criteria, which deals with dwellings located in the floodplain and have the additional criteria of lateral expansion and lateral expansion impact on impervious area, does not apply to this, or does it?
The existing house is in the, is in the floodplain. The new house is retreating back and is a foot away?
Yes.
So it does not?
And the guest house, the same thing. The existing's in the floodplain, the existing garage, the proposed is out.
And when you were talking about the one-foot revision going to 23 feet, is that the same one foot that you're talking about here?
That's for the shed.
That's for the shed?
So the shed next to the sports court was on the other side of the sports court and we, we mirrored it.
So, so if the, if the proposal was not that one foot away, would you then be required to comply with the lateral expansion concepts?
I, I think that that, and this is only a guess, I think that that is an appropriate response to questions you were getting this board has gotten over the last number of years, that, you know, Jay, his predecessor, said, you know, you guys have got to go up because you're on the floodplain, your house has to be elevated. And the applicant said, okay, we'll go up eight feet or two feet or whatever it is. And by the way, we want to increase the size of our house laterally as well. That's not the case here. This is a cri, a criteria which does not, criterion which does not apply to the specific case. Because we're not, we're not expanding in the floodplain at all.
Okay. Let me just go back to that same question, though. If, if you were not that one foot away, would these criteria apply?
Well, it's, first of all, it's, it's degree of expansion as a consideration for you, if I recall, rather than a specific limit. But I think it would only apply to that portion of the house that is in the floodplain. And we're not. There, there are, the neighborhoods that I've mentioned, whether it's Eastwood Point or Little Beach, where everything's in the floodplain. That's where you acknowledge, we all acknowledge the house has to be elevated to get it out of the floodplain. The further question is, how much bigger is it getting? Even if that, laterally, even if that lateral expansion complies? Can't comply at Little Beach because the lots are too small. But at Eastwood Point, it can.
I have no other questions.
I'm sorry, Paul, does he have anything else?
I have no other questions.
Okay. Randy?
So first, we'll talk about lighting a little bit. So that viewing area, is there going to be some lighting in there?
Yeah, and, and we're sympathetic to, to the question, we understand the question. There's going to be a couple of chairs. And the times that people are going to be up there are at, you know, sunrise to look over to what used to be North Beach. Or at sunset to look to the left, at least in the summer, because in the winter it sets too far to the left. Nobody's going to be up there at night. There's no intention to have light, interior light shining up. If, I haven't spoken to my client, but if the board wanted a condition that there be no illumination in there at night, perfectly acceptable.
I mean, because we can't restrict your use of that, you know?
We can if you accept the condition.
We can if you accept the condition. So there's that. And then there's also the fact that this, it looks like when you first go down there, oh, no one's going to see this. It's kind of like something falls in the, in the forest, didn't, didn't even make a noise because no one knows. But it's really not like that. Because if you go with the neighbor, the neighbor's house that are higher up, you can see this. And you could hear everything that goes on down there, because that's how it is, you know? The voices carry. So there's lighting that, that are somewhat issues. I mean, what about the sports area? What if you want to play after supper? Are you really not going to have lights there? And how much noise is going to come from that? Echo up into the other people's quiet enjoyment of their property?
Two things, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
First, if I could pass out a couple of sets of photographs taken from neighboring properties. And it might help you to, to understand that, for instance, Ms. Wilson's house is about 300 feet from the sports court. It's not terribly close. And of course, there is a tennis court at present. If the board suggests a condition on no lighting of the sports court, no use of the sports court after certain hours, that would be acceptable to the applicant.
Well, I don't, I don't know if that's really our purview to tell them when they can use their own property. Because then you get into the taking.
Well, if, if I, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it's sort of a theoretical issue. The applicant is coming to you looking for relief. And I think, some of you have heard me say this before. What I always say to my clients is, the board might say to you, your project is okay, but we want you to paint the shutters pink. And the applicant has the right to say, wait a minute, you have no right to tell us that. And your response to the applicant is, you have no right to a special permit. All right? You don't tell people to paint their shutters pink. But if the applicant is willing to accept a condition, it becomes the law of the land.
I think they have a right to a special permit. And I think you know that they, they do. Unless we find that the project is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Because all special permits are considered to be detrimental to the neighborhood. That's my reading of the law. But they're not substantially detrimental unless there's a substantial change. And mostly our changes are, are not, they're, they're more conforming. And I get that. But what we have here, in my view, is a massive house. Massive, absolutely massive. And you can't compare this to Cocke Cove or Ridgeville or, I mean, I'm not an expert on Chatham. I've only been here nine years. But those are very moderate to even minimal neighborhoods compared to this mass of a house that you want to put there. And I'm not saying that I'm not going to say yes to it, but I'm saying that it's not comparable.
No, I was talking more about the floodplain issue, but I think if you-
And then when we get back to the floodplain, right this minute, this house isn't in the floodplain. But I think we have to think out a little, an amount. And the floodplain is riddled with floodplain concerns. And it's right on the water. They haven't really pulled it back. They could push, they could pull it back if they wanted, 20, 30 feet away from the coastal bank. But they haven't done that because they want that view. And again, it's their, sort of their right to have that. You know, I'm not in the business of taking away people's constitutional rights to their house. But at the same time, we have other factors here. We've all talked about a lot of them. The lighting is certainly something that could be conditioned. And let's see if I had anything else I wanted to mention. No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
So, Ted.
May I respond for a moment?
Oh.
Just about the floodplain?
Okay.
Bring up the simple site plan again, please? I don't want to interrupt, though, if you- The simplified. So pulling the main house back puts you into floodplain. And so really, a skinny house could be pulled back, taking away from the water views, the waterfrontage. Back in here, putting a house in would certainly bring it back from the floodplain, to get it out of the floodplain. But where do we put the septic system? And that's the most conforming location on the property for a septic system. So it's, it's a tough lot with a floodplain going through. Thank you.
But the size of the house is tough, it's chosen.
The size, the massive house that we have here, plus the other house, you know, you have, you have a little house and a big house. That's self-inflicted. I mean, and that's all within a very close range of a floodplain. What's going to happen if the floodplain increases and you have to lift that whole thing up? I mean, that's, you know, could happen.
Indeed, it could. And, you know, many things could happen. What, and we understand in terms of the size, I think the numbers show that, on the third page, show that it's, I mean, certainly compared to the house, immediately uphill, it's much smaller. But I understand your point.
Ted, let's talk about revetments, please. Once a month, I walk up and go in front of the wildlife area. And the revetment that the neighbors built is, of course, being compromised from behind because the water's going in and pulling that out and pulling it out. So I presume with this revetment, the same thing's going to happen. As you mentioned, as the waters rise, how are you going to stop? I mean, that's the nature of the beast. And I don't know what the word for it is, where the water swirls behind, but-
End scour.
What's that?
End scour.
Oh, well, thank you, okay. I learned something, no, I remember that, and next time I'll do a crossword puzzle, right? So I, I hear what you say about moving the house back from where it's planned to put. But I honestly would rather see a house in the floodplain than this close to disaster, which is what it would be should the water go up another foot or two, whatever it might be, or we have a hurricane and they get in there and just pull that away. Because it's, it's so close to the, the end of that revetment. It's so close to where you're going to put this house. And I, the, the first line I was able to figure out on your very fancy plans, and I'm sorry I'm such an adult that I couldn't figure it out, but I said, oh, there's the property line and it runs through the end of the revetment. So, you, you, you know, I, I'm just, why shouldn't I be worried that this is going to happen? And that the best idea for a new house is to push it back?
So this area is less dynamic than, than Staged Neck or Stage Island. There is a lot of flow going through there right now, especially with the inlets and the barrier beach changing. We're in a much more protected area. I mean, that's why it's Pleasant Bay, it's, it's calmer. We cannot put a revetment, nobody can put a revetment through here because it's Coastal Dune and not Coastal Bank. They do have the option that if they start seeing erosion here, our Conservation Commission is going to ask them to start with fiber rules. If it is severe enough, they are allowed to put revetment coming back in order to protect their property.
But that would be what, two a year? A, a two-year proposition, can it be approved? I mean, it seems to me.
So as Paul mentioned, the basement slab elevation is at the current floodplain. The first floor would meet it should the, it become in the floodplain. It would meet the requirement of the one-foot of freeboard under current conditions. The future is fuzzy. You know, we can't say whether we're going to see, I mean, currently on Nantucket, we're seeing a sea level rise of 15 inches per century. Well, over the past 10,000 years, we've seen an average of one foot per century. So it's faster, but it, there are also estimates that we're going to see two feet by 2050.
If this revetment wasn't built, would this house be in the water?
Possibly.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, it was only 2014 or 15 that the neighbor put a revetment in next door.
If this was your lot and your house, I'm talking about you, Thad. And I know there's a loaded question, if you don't want to answer. Where would you place the house?
I once considered buying a house in the floodplain. And I didn't. And then I saw some storms come through. I saw videos of Provincetown being overrun with waves. And I said, thank goodness, I never had a house in the floodplain and I would never put a house. I never want to live full-time within a floodplain. So I'd rather put the house outside the floodplain than in.
Even though you're so close, close to a different kind of disaster?
Certainly.
Yeah.
You know, with all the coastal properties, there's a risk.
Sure. Mr. Muldoon, you're, the viewing station, I think you referred to that. What's that got to do with Cape Cod? You know, to me, it detracts from the design. It doesn't add a thing.
It, it helps us create the pivot point. So we've got two masses that are coming together at that inside V. And the, the smash of, of two Cape houses or two Cape roofs with shed dormers becomes problematic. The materials, I, I'd say are quintessential Cape Cod. The form of having, having the ability to see those views up, up North Beach and Pleasant Bay celebrates the, the idea of living in this location.
Well, I would think if I lived in this house, I'd be, I'd have a lot of great views without a viewing station. So, and the business about lights, I happen to live next to one of Mr. Litchfield's clients. Who likes to leave the light on and has cupola for a couple of weeks at a crack. Always on. And I don't have a key to break in to turn it off, unfortunately.
Could be a high crime zone and fear of neighbors, Mr. Chairman, but I, I don't know that to be the case.
I'm looking for people who have a bazooka, actually. They would, they would loan me, and that might cure my problems, right? Well, I think I have no more questions.
Before, if I could, Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Simple makes the motion, I anticipate he would, I might have some questions involving board concerns and board preferences if a straw poll were to indicate that there were four, weren't four affirmative votes. And so I understand you want to close the hearing or maybe closing the hearing for deliberation, but if I could be afforded the opportunity to- deliberation, but if I could be afforded the opportunity to impose, I would appreciate that.
So I'd be happy to call for a straw vote, if you like. Okay? And would you like, I'll just have everybody vote, because who knows who would be here a, a next time around, okay?
And, and then, you know, if we could get some guidance, if, if there is not unanimous approval, if we could get some guidance as to what might be a priority, I understand the viewing station is an issue, potential for perhaps moving it, or not moving it, you know, those sorts of things would be helpful to the applicant and to Paul at that.
Okay, all right. Well, I think we can all, like, I can tell you in three words or less what my concerns would be, and I'm sure we all can. So I'll just, we can do this one by one, I, I think that makes sense. I'll start with Buck. Buck, on a straw vote, yes or no?
No. Does he want the answers to some of my issues, or just no?
We'll get to the answers in a bit, okay? Lee?
This is, this is definitely a tough one. Said, I think, on the first application, we saw it was a modest, it was a modest renovation. This is not a modest product, project. It is quite substantial. I appreciate everything that they tried to do to adjust it, but it's, it's, it's just a very big house. I would be inclined to say no.
Paul?
Well, I think, I think there do need to be some adjustments to, to what's been proposed, so as it stands right now, I think it does need revisions.
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think three things, criteria-wise, suitability of the site. You have done a masterful job, all, all of you, in having that building fit so well in the constraints of the wetland, the salt marsh, the Pleasant Bay, but we've been just talking about the potential for flooding. It's really not a suitable site, in my view, for such a large house. I mean, you've done a great job of getting everything in there, but I think it is, is 28 feet from a 15-foot revetment, it's too close. So to come back means it has to be scaled back, that, that's my view. Second point is a criteria five scale. We talked about 122 feet of, and I know it has the bend, versus 65. That's an 88% increase in, like, feet of that house. And that doesn't include the shed and the guest house. And then the third is, is safety, and I think that we don't know what's going to happen with flooding, but there's a revetment, I think 2011 is Mr. Rogers, what did you say, Thad, or someone said 2015? The revetment for, 2014, the revetment for Mr. Foster?
To the east, yeah.
So, and I don't know anything about revetments, but I agree with the chairman that I think it's been understood and documented in some cases that the revetment works, it holds the sediment of the bank, and that's the purpose, and it's doing that for 299, and it's doing that for Mr. Foster's property. But that area in between is sea level. And I don't know how long it's been that way, but you have an aerial photo that shows that, it shows sand in the middle of these two properties. So I just put safety out there as a criteria of some concern, and particularly with the house being 28 feet from that, from that revetment, so.
Dave?
Oh, wow. Well, I heard a, and a lot of concerns expressed here today, both in the letters and board members and neighbors and, and all, and I, I guess I'm, I would take a little bit different tack on, on much of what I've heard. I, I think the site, I, I think the site is adequate for what they're proposing. It's, it's certainly, yes, it's more than what's there, certainly. The, it's, the new house is an improvement over what's there, both with respect to the floodplain considerations, and also the, you know, the new house, the guest house, as opposed to the garage things, with respect to the floodplain issues, and, and everything they've done to, to fit things in in a way that's, improves what's on the ground now. Yes, it's becoming larger, but gee, I mean, I look at the 30 Farin Lane, and the gross floor area there is 11,000 square feet, you know? So they're proposing to go for, I mean, that's the largest in the neighborhood, certainly, but they're proposing to go from 42 to 6,000 or something, I'm not sure. I, I guess, so then it comes down to, if everything I've heard, all the different kinds about rising sea level, carbon sequestering, and, you know, all these various things, you know, I look at the law that we are here to be interpreting and, and trying to understand, and I, for one, and I don't feel, and the concerns about the, the seascape, this, this back wing, in my judgment, is not really going to show up from out on the water. With respect to the site and what they're proposing to do, I believe this is the place to put the house. I believe the addition that they're showing is the place to put an addition in a way that does not overwhelm the, the, the view from the water, or from any, if you were over on Strong Island looking back or something. I, this, this is not going to stand out, I don't believe, any more than the house that's there. I, with respect to proximity to a revetment, I know some things about that. And, you know, I.
He's got one, that's why he says that.
I have one. And the revetment is there to do its job, and, and I think Thad responded that if pushing and shoving came, there were measures they could take to continue to, to protect their property if the end of that revetment is showing problems. You know, I've, I've, I'm now, lived the experience of, of a revetment doing its job for, gee, almost 30 years now, since we bought that property. So I, I have some faith in revetments. And, and so, a, a, all in all, I, I could, as it's been presented, I, I don't think I, I wouldn't feel right in saying that I feel substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The lighting issues, things, and noise issues, I mean, this is at the end of the road. I mean, yes, they have neighbors, and neighbors are concerned, but I just, I, I'm, I'm hard-pressed to, to find out that, what their proposal stands to be more detrimental than things.
Okay, and I would be on the negative side myself. I think that, you know, it's too big, I'd really like to see it pushed back, and as far as I'm concerned, that viewing platform is totally, totally out of place. So Buck, did you want to explain your no, or are you happy with just saying no?
In the spirit of full transparency, this would be my last vote, so I'm going to offer something as a suggestion, more than, I agree with the chair, my number one concern is that viewing platform. And, and if you, if you got rid of that chimney right next to it, that's just as tall or taller, I don't know if it, it would have to be that height anymore, if you're looking at a draft and smoke and all that other stuff. It's big. I love the architecture. I mean, it's, you know, I don't know how you can just push the minus button and take it down 20%, but I can do that on my computer, so I'm sure you can. You know, but it could be a little smaller, but get rid of the viewing station and the, and, and just maybe cut the top off the chimney.
Lee, did you want to expand on your comments at all, Paul?
No, I agree that the, as it is right now, it is large, it's, it's somewhat massive. I think reducing the viewing platform concept takes down the height. We're seeing so many of these things that are being built that they're within two inches of the absolute minimum, maximum, and, and it just, it seems like it wouldn't be necessary in a, in a house this size. I do not favor putting it into the floodplain, because it seems to me that just raises all kinds of, of worse issues. So I think it's possible to use the location where it's at, modifying the design to make something more compatible, and keeping the, the issues that you are able to survive with the conservation commission, reducing some of the non-conformities there.
Randy, do you want to say anything else? No, okay. So, Mr.
We very much appreciate the time that you, ladies and gentlemen, have taken for this hearing, and particularly the guidance which you have given us. It is probably impossible to, to address every concern, because some of them are different. Some said move it back, some said leave it where it is, so we can't, we can't satisfy everybody, and we understand that. But we are nonetheless grateful for the guidance. If we could, Mr. Chairman, ask that this matter be continued until September, I believe August is booked. Second hearing in September would be satisfactory. I asked Mr. Muldoon how long he would need to hit his reduction button. It can't be done for your next hearing. But obviously, we have to talk with Carrie and Tim and Thad, but if you, the board would be willing to continue this matter until the date, second hearing in September, we feel that we would be prepared to come back to you with something which is responsive.
So we have September 14th, and then September 28th.
14th is fine with Mr. Muldoon, also by Ms. Felice, and everything's fine by Mr. Eldridge, so that's fine.
And to Mr. Eldridge and Mr. Muldoon, we greatly appreciate you coming in person. When you appear on the screen, it's, it's never this give and take, and so I know it takes valuable time, and you're losing money by coming here, but thank you very much, okay? I did want to say that. So, we need a vote on that, Paul.
I'll move to grant the request to continue us to September 14, 2023.
And Dave Veatch seconds.
And Buck approves. Paul approves?
Randy approves?
Veatch approves.
And remember that Buck's last vote was yes.
That's totally true.
I know that, I know that, but, so, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
This is, this is your last meeting with us, you are retiring, you're going to meander down the highway of life, and God knows where you're going to go, what it'll bring, but thank you for your service to this town, and for your wisdom, and everything else, and your tomatoes, yeah, your cucumbers, right? But thank you very much, Buck. You really, you know, when you talk about people who volunteer and they do things in town and whatnot, thank you, sir, very much. So, we need to adjourn, Paul.
I'll move to adjourn.
Veatch seconds.
Buck approves, yes.
Yes.
Paul brooches, yes.
Randy votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
Veatch votes yes.
And I vote yes, and the official time is, Sarah, please?
6:40 PM.
6:40 PM. Thank you all for coming, we stand adjourned.